Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 15, 2022. The time is 2:01 PM. Before we start our meeting, we'll pause for 30 seconds of silence. Thank you, everyone.
Chris, turn on your mic.
This is Nisha Miani.
Okay. So attending our commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios, and we'll move on to Pledge of Allegiance. Mary, would you lead us, please?
...................................................
All right, then. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes. Items 15 and 31 have been polled, and I would ask that we handle items 28 and 29 after item 16.
Okay. We can do that. Dave, we don't need a motion, do we?
No, just reorder.
Okay. So we'll order as indicated. All right. Approval of the meeting minutes, please.
I move that we approve items 1 through 7.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Moving on to the consent calendar.
I move that we approve items 8 through 13.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Okay. Payables list.
I move that we approve the payables for the week of March 7 through 11, 2022, in the amount of $516,673.13.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. And the payables list is approved. First business item, 15, is stricken. Item 16, which is a bid opening, bid number or specification number 28022, invitation for bids for the bus stop improvement at Panhandle Health. It's stop number C15. It's Hayden and Hutter also, by the way. It's Seltice B3. Cortlande specification number 280222 with our Resource Management Office.
All right. I have two bids. And the first one, I don't want to misstate their names, so I will open it first because their initials are on the outset. So this is from, I don't even have their name here. National Native American Construction, Inc. And it, item 1 is $127,695, and that's for the Hutter-Seltice. And then the Panhandle Health stop is $120,753, for a total of $248,448.
Okay.
Second bid, which is from Interstate Concrete and Asphalt. First bus stop at Hutter and Seltice, $127,888. And the second one, Panhandle Health, is $108,777, for a total of $236,665. So I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the two bids and hand them out to RMO and Legal for review.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Thank you. Okay. So we're moving items 28 and 29 up for the Aquifer Protection District. And item 28 is an agreement for protection of surface water recharge zones of the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer, and it's with Rand Wickman Planning LLC. Nisha, please.
Yes. So this would, this contract just allows Rand to work for the Aquifer Protection District on an hourly not-to-exceed basis to a ceiling of $15,000. And the scope of services is related to assistance with property owner outreach at the critical recharge areas that we've identified, primarily starting with Hauser Lake and then Rathrum, and assisting us with potentially establishing easements at those areas.
Okay. Any questions for Nisha?
No.
Motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for the protection of water surface recharge zones with Rand Wickman Planning.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion carried. Can you take the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, and then 29, Nisha, agreement for Aquifer Protection District master plan again with Rand Wickman Planning LLC. Go ahead.
Yes. So the second contract with Rand Wickman would be in the amount hourly not to exceed $10,000. The scope of this contract would be for Rand to help the Aquifer Protection District Board in creating a master plan to identify priorities for the parcel fee revenue collected for protection of the aquifer.
No questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for Aquifer Protection for the district water master plan with Rand Wickman Planning LLC.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Nisha.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Okay. So moving on back to item 17, authorization for additional services for the bus stop improvements with JUB Engineers, Resource Management Office. Who's on?
Chad. Chad?
Chad, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Chad Engel for the record. Thank you, Commissioners. We're speaking authorization for additional services through JUB Engineering for the agreement for the bus stop improvements. This was updated for the plans and contract assistance during the rebidding for the formalized bid process and the shelter design.
Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the authorization for additional services on the bus stop improvements with JUB.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion carried. Item 18, Airport Work, Airport Work Order 22-02, rehabilitate runway 624 and construct a taxiway B4, and that's design only with TO engineers. Stephen?
Mr. Stephen Kierger for the record. This is a contract with TO Engineering. It's in the amount of $375,496.19. This would be a FAA grant match, so 90% FAA, typically 5% US, 5% state. It could be 7.5% US, 2.5% state, but I would expect a 5 and 5 from us.
Okay.
This was a, done with an independent fee review as required by FAA. That independent fee review came back at $363,326. That was done by Mayak Consult, or Mayak Engineering. That's a variance of 3.24%,
Okay.
which is within allowable limits, which is 10% under FAA guidance.
Okay. Any questions for Stephen?
What is the total work? I mean, this is just the engineers portion.
The estimated is about 2.5 million.
And when would it begin?
Next year.
Okay. How long for the design?
We should have the design done within about six months.
Okay. Motion? Bill?
I move that we approve work order number 22-02, the rehabilitation runway of runway 624 and construct taxiway B4, design only with TO Engineering.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Item 19, thank you, Stephen, contract renewal for Everbridge for 911. Who's on?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Alan Mallory, 911 com admin. We are seeking to have the contract with Everbridge renewed. Everbridge is our vendor for mass notifications within the county, as well as we use it for reverse 911 calls.
Okay. Is this annual?
It is annual.
Okay.
And was there any fee increase this year?
They changed their model of billing. Now they're giving us minutes credits, basically, for usage. And they looked at our last five years, and they increased that by 40% to give us kind of a ceiling.
Okay. So I see it's about 45 thou, whoa, 4.5 million. Sorry. Those are commas. Okay.
Yeah, that's our credits for usage.
Okay. Great.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Alan.
All right. Thanks. Motion?
I move that we approve the contract renewal for Everbridge.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion carried. Item 20, County Department Annual Report, Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections, Juvenile Probation. Deb Nadeau, thank you, Deb.
You're welcome. And I have Zalata Mer with me from Department of Juvenile Corrections.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And this is the same report that we got in our business meeting packet.
Thank you.
Yes.
This, this might include the state.
It does.
To compare the state versus just our county. My name is Zalata Mer, and I'm a district liaison with the Department of Juvenile Corrections. And this is our annual report for, for the purposes of making it a little easier to compare and just see things. This report specifically has, the county is at the very top, the district in the middle, and the state at the very bottom.
Okay.
And I did send out individual reports, so this is just for presentation purposes, just to make it easier. And then Debbie will step in any time. So overall, over this last year, we're looking at detention, youth arrests, detention admissions and petitions have trended down pretty significantly across the state, so that's a good thing. We're seeing an increase in, a little bit of an increase in misdemeanors in this, on the state level. Overall, it looks like status offenses are down, which is really, really important. That also means that the training and education we're doing across the state is working. And so just a quick reminder, a status offense is anything that's illegal because of your age. So possession of tobacco, runaway, things like that. In this county, that dropped by almost half from last year, so that's huge, especially considering then the nine rotating judges, just the number of kids and all the different partners involved. So if we skip to the next page, so Debbie can speak more to this. What I will say about the overall picture of the diversion, probation, intakes and releases, this is really dependent on when the juvenile is placed on probation and when their term expires. And then, did you want to say anything about it? No. I mean, we're proud of the rates that we always have with getting our youth through our probation programs and, you know, the successful probation termination rates that we see every year. It's down a percent from last year, but with COVID, the last two years, I'm still super proud of those numbers. Well, some of the things that Cooney County probation does that's a little different than others is they do a really good job of partnering with everyone and taking advantage of community programs. The First T-Golf program is one example of that. So essentially, it's a, it's a nationwide program that's run by golf courses, but it's, it's kind of educational, so the youth working with a golf pro in probation learns various lessons over a course of, I think it's 10 weeks. And that's a, that's a program that doesn't cost the county anything, doesn't cost the department anything. It's a partnership. So I think using those creative resources is one way that they really stretch those dollars. And that's just one example of many others.
Good job.
Moving on to snapshot of essentially what are the demographics of Idaho. So really, across the board, we're looking at 14 to 16-year-old males on, in the juvenile justice system that are primarily white. If you take a look at the, the gender, we're looking at 35%, 65 split. This is pretty consistent across the district. There's been some where that's spiked up quite a bit. We're not entirely sure as to why that is, other than training and education of SROs and being more aware of gender issues and, you know, status offenses and various other crimes. Go back to the next page. The September 30 snapshot is just essentially, is essentially that. It's one moment in time that we do annually. So across the board, youth on probation are down, meaning as far as the youth during this time period that were placed on probation happen to be on a caseload. One of the things that's important to note is, even though we've seen a trend of there's less kids on probation, the kids are more complicated than ever, and I can't overstate that. The issues that we're across the board addressing with mental health issues, substance abuse, all of those things are essentially, I would say, 70, 80% of caseloads. So even though there's less, there's a lot more complicated issues. Diversion numbers are up across the board, which is fantastic. So that means that more kids are being caught before they head to the court system, and they're being diverted from having a court record. So that's really great. And it really requires the schools, the prosecutor, probation department, diversion, all of these different parties to work together to actually make that happen. So it's not just as simple as a diversion program. And what's really unique about Cooney County is the diversion department and probation departments are actually separate entities. In a lot of places, they're in, under one umbrella. So that just shows you the consistency of how even that group works well together. As far as youth in IDJC custody, those numbers have been pretty steady, but we are at our lowest census than we've ever been, which is tremendous, because once upon a time when we were building facilities, I'm sure you've heard the super predator term, our facilities were built to address that population. To, we were supposed to have something like 500 kids in custody. Because of all the various services that we have at the community level, we have 160, 170. And as an agency, we're continuously working closely with everyone to get kids home sooner because we know that more time in custody isn't necessarily better. So those are some of our objectives, and we work with counties for that. If you take a look at the community service hours, so those are hours that were ordered somehow through the court system, and it's very difficult for kids to complete these hours because you have to be 16 typically, you have to have the, the county partner business onboard to actually supervise the juvenile, and the time for them to do so. So any amount of time, especially during COVID, I think is a miracle. And as far as the restitution paid, so it's important to note that when the restitution was ordered, we don't necessarily know. So even though in the last year, 24,000 was paid in Cooney County, that may have been ordered the year prior, or it may have been ordered in 1995. So we don't know that. Anything you want to say about recidivism? No. Again, we're super happy with those recidivism numbers and proud of the work that my department does.
Okay.
And lastly, the funding page is one of my favorites because it kind of talks about the, the big picture of all the funding. So to start off with, funding is distributed from, from us, the JCA funding specifically is Juvenile Corrections Act funding. We funnel through about $14 million to counties, and that's based on the juvenile population. When we created these reports, we know the exact census numbers of whether or not there's been an uptake in juvenile population. Hopefully, last, next year, that's something we'll know. We do report on the tobacco and cigarette funds, however, they don't, we don't have anything to do with that funding stream, we just report it. And for projection purposes, we will not be able to have those ready until the legislature closes, so usually that's sometime in April. Besides the Juvenile Corrections Act funding stream, we also have the substance use disorder stream, which is specifically funded for all things related to drugs and alcohol. And Debbie is actually in charge of the SUDS cohort in this district, and you can talk about that if you want. So with the five northern counties, we're
District 1.
allotted a certain amount of, amount of money for youth to receive treatment services for substance use disorders. Some of the smaller counties, obviously, with smaller populations, have less money allotted to them, but as a district, we work together. So all of our youth receive whatever level of treatment is required, whether it's inpatient, outpatient, prevention services, whatever is needed, they're receiving that level of services. And as a district, our five counties, we work fantastic together to ensure that that happens for all youth in the district. So Cooney County doesn't always use our entire allotment, but we're helping Benowah County when they have a kid that needs an inpatient treatment, that one inpatient treatment uses up their entire allotment of funds for the year. So as a district, we work together to ensure, again, that all the counties, all the youth receive that level of treatment that's needed.
So if a particular county is out of funds, another county can, can step in?
Because it, we work together as a district.
Does it deserve?
And I don't know that it's that way statewide, but in our
In our, okay.
district, our five northern counties work together to ensure that that happens.
Wonderful.
Mm-hmm. And then the last funding stream is the community-based alternative services, so that's CBAS. And that's everything to do with, from mental health to equine therapy, sex offender treatment, everything that's not drug and alcohol related. We've revamped our system at the state level as to how you can apply for those services. It's now in a database, it's easier than ever. It's went from a 15-page report no one wanted to fill out to a very quick update, and we're constantly updating service providers that we have and talking to counties about what's working out and what's not. So it's easier for them to access this funding. So all of this funding stream is outside of the normal budget, so it's, they make it go very, very far, and that's fantastic. So nothing but good things to say.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment that our juvenile diversion is under our prosecutor's office.
Yes.
And so they work really well under the BOCC with our juvenile probation, so.
Yep. Good job. Any questions for Zlata or Deb?
Nope.
It's always a good report. And especially considering the increase in the population.
Our, our overall general population.
Overall, general, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do you want the motion to accept it?
Is there any action that's going to be taken?
No. Uh-uh.
No.
Okay.
So the board signed, back in November, December, you actually signed
Yes.
forms that you have to present, but this is just a compilation of what you approved.
What we approved, then.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Okay. So moving on to item 21, Ortho Imagery Acquisition Contract with Pictrometry, excuse me, Pictometry International Corp. and our Information Technology Division. Dave, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Dave Christensen, for the record. Today, I'm bringing you our annual contract with Pictometry to fly and license our imagery. The only change really from last year is that we'll be bringing in an additional partner this year, KEC. So where we typically, being the county, pay for about half, and the cities, being Cortlande, Hayden, and Post Falls pick up the other half, now we'll be paying a third this year, if you guys approve it. KEC will pay a third, and the cities will pay a third.
Okay. How do you do this? Do you use drones?
It's actually a plane. Pictometry has a group of planes that they bring, and they have sensors in the bottom of them, and they fly it, take digital photographs, send it back home, process the data. We get it within about three weeks to four weeks.
Interesting. Okay, then. Any questions? Any changes to the amount?
It actually stood about the same as the previous year. I was quite surprised.
Okay.
It may have even gone down ever so slightly, but there certainly was no increase this year.
Okay, great.
Which is surprising considering fuel.
Yeah, you bet.
Exactly. I was really surprised that the cost came out at the same.
Thank you, Dave. Motion?
I move that we approve the Ortho Imagery Acquisition Contract with Pictometer International Corporation and IT.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Item 22, Financial, Financial Budget LF Pipe Purchase Approval, Solid Waste. JP, is he on?
Is anybody on from Solid Waste?
From Solid Waste?
All right.
Uh-huh. And we have a second item, too.
Yeah.
Insurance Settlement of Transfer Trailer.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they're, all the documentation was in our
It's all reviewed?
So, yeah. So I'm, I'm fine with both of them.
Okay.
So the first one would just be bringing before us because it hits that $20,000 limit. So they're asking for just the permission per one, 930, policy 930.
Okay.
So I would move that we would approve the purchase of the LF pipe.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion's carried. And then there's the second related item. Go ahead, Leslie.
It's actually not related. It's just that they had a transfer trailer
Oh, okay.
that was destroyed, and they would like the insurance settlement to go back to their department.
Back to their department.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
And while we're signing the title, releasing ownership as well.
Okay.
So, so I move that we approve the, or ask the chairman to sign the insurance settlement for the transfer trailer.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Item 24, ASC Fee Schedule Addenda for ASC and Stop Loss with Regions Blue Shield of Idaho. Dorothy Cross, Human Resources?
Yes, Dorothy Cross, for the record. It's actually items 24, 25, 26, and 27 are all addendums to the contract you signed last week. So you signed agreements in November that were estimates of this.
Yeah.
They're exactly the same prices. Our administrative fees went down 73 cents per employee per month. Our stop-loss fees went down 1158 per employee per month. And then the other two are agreements on a refund, experience-rated refund on stop-loss. So if we reach a certain point, we could get up to 35% refund. And then the final one is just a cap. They agree that if we have the unfortunate situation of a lot of stop-loss claims, our rates can't go up more than 50%. We're unlikely to have that, but it's a very good thing to have signed on record. So that's basically what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Who wants to handle it?
Can we group these? What do you think? Okay.
You want me to handle it?
I do. I approve, I move we approve items 24, 25, 26, and 27.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay, 28 and 29 were moved, yes. 30, Offer to Purchase Tax Deed, sealed bid, AIN 257186, and the party is Cazur. Action?
Yes. I will open the sealed bid. And it is for $1,000 for that AIN. And, yeah, so Treasure, did you have something to add from Treasure's office?
So--
Oh, sorry.
The total amount due on this parcel is $1,601.50. $397 of that is hard costs incurred during the tax deed process. There are $602 roughly in interest and $12 in late charges. So obviously, our office would like you to get the entire $1,601, but there is roughly $615 in late charges and interest that the board could choose to not collect.
Okay.
Right, so if you just take the interest off, essentially, then they have covered the taxes and fees.
They've covered the taxes and fees.
So I'm comfortable with that.
Bill?
Yep.
I'm good, too. Okay, motion?
All right. I move that we accept the offer to purchase AIN 257186, party Cazur for $1,000.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, motion's carried. Thank you, ladies. Item 31 was stricken. 32, Resolution 2022-19, finalize the resolution to Parks and Waterways Emergency Vessel Approach, no wake speed limit, and this is, who's going to be speaking for the sheriff? Sergeant Ryan?
Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record. Thank you, Commissioners, good afternoon. This is a proposed amendment of the current section 62104. We're asking to include for vessel operators, when they're approaching emergency vessels, displaying a flashing light, that they bring it down to a no-wake speed. This is to increase and ensure the safety of citizens and law enforcement and emergency services while conducting official business.
Okay.
Essentially like the--
Move over.
Yeah. Move over law on roads.
There's over a dozen states in the country that are starting to go this way, so it is a trend. We do not currently have an ordinance in the state. I suspect that several will start following our lead on this one, once we start it.
Was it an issue last year?
Oh, yeah.
With the increased population, absolutely it is. And just to give you, you know, one of many scenarios, it was actually both of us were on a stop for an OUI investigation, and in order to keep everyone safe, we had to prolong the stop. The vessels were hitting each other, all the waves, people were almost falling overboard. The 12 individuals onboard, all 12, I think actually one was sober.
Oh, geez.
So it was a very difficult scene, and that was one of many scenes that we had this season. So it will become a severe safety issue and damage to county vessels and civilian vessels.
And their vessels.
And when we seize them in a traffic stop, we're kind of responsible for anything that can occur.
Yeah, okay. Wow, 11 out of 12.
Yes.
Yes, sir. That was not including the sheriff's boat, right?
That was not including the sheriff's boat.
Okay. All right, then, thank you. Motion? Bill, you want to take it?
Yes, sure. I move that we approve Resolution 2022-19, finalize resolution to Parks and Waterways Emergency Vessel Approach, no-wake speed limit for the sheriff's office.
Second. Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
I want to make a clarification on item 30, and I don't know how you want me to do this, Dave, is just the fact that the $1,000 will go towards hard costs first and the fees that we can't write off, and then the last thing to be paid will be taxes.
Taxes.
Okay.
Yep. All right, then.
All right.
Okay, moving on to our status update pending items. Thanks, Dave. Okay, item number one, facilities expansion.
Just waiting for our ARPA presentation.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Due at the end of this month?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's from the task force.
Yes.
Pack Airport Lease, nothing until?
24th.
Today, 24th?
March 24th.
March, yep, that's what I meant. I put down three. Skeet and Gun Club, not yet.
No.
Okay, it's when their board meets, right?
No, I don't think we'll hear from them until December.
Okay.
Probably.
December 22. Northlot Land Sale.
Yep, just waiting. Actually, Dave just left. Just waiting for him to approve the deed, and then it'll come before us on a business meeting, and then that project will be done.
Okay, cool. It's funny, because I had a call from people from the conservatory, and they were concerned about the stakes going in, and I had explained to them that, no, it was the other property.
The neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, financial snapshot, nope, that comes again next month, and I don't have to announce the ARPA--
Nope, that's--
--deadline, because that was March 1st. Are there any, is there any public comment, please? Jim, please. Make sure the mic is on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name's Jim Stafford, I'm president of--
You do need to hit the mic. Sorry, there's a red dot. Just push the button.
It's also bent down.
Now, how's that?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jim Stafford, I'm the president of the Spokane River Association, and I'm here to commend the Commissioners for continuing to support the safety of our waterways with the new regulation that they passed today, and it supports the deputies, which we also support. The little thing that we don't agree with is that last year, the Commissioners and their way to continue to improve the safety of our waterways passed Resolution 202163, which was to control excessive wakes on the river. And our sheriff has chosen to publicly and in writing not to choose not to enforce that regulation, and we find that unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Ken? Anything? Anyone else? Okay. I have 2:37, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.